Okay, good evening and welcome to the January 21st, 2014 regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee. It is 7:00 PM. Call the meeting to order. The meeting is being both audiotaped and videotaped this evening. And I would ask everyone to please rise for the touch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd ask for a roll call, please. To my left.
Elizabeth Marcin-Boucher.
Richard Fuchero.
Deirdre Mayeau.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Bill Fonseca.
Terry Olajara, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Okay, thank you. And can we entertain a motion? We have some guests tonight, and considering the weather and the snowiness, if we can move 7.1 up to after 3:00 if possible. So a motion to amend.
I make a motion to amend the agenda for this evening, moving 7.1 High School Program of Studies revision for 2014 to 15 to right under number 3 on the agenda.
Okay. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, we don't need to move that one.
No, I don't think we should be all set.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you so much. We have some minutes, please.
Move to approve the January 6th, 2014 regular session minutes.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion?
Just, we're missing two names under the school, under capital planning. Two members' names, Tom O'Connor's name is missing on the presentations, a member of the Capital Planning Committee.
Okay.
And I think Rocco Carabatta came in late.
He did, he did.
Is he on capital planning?
Yes, he is.
He is still on committee, so, okay. So we'll add those two names.
Yep.
So, motion to amend the minutes to include those two names.
So moved.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is on the floor then for the minutes. So to approve those with the amendment, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Next.
I move to, oh, sorry. I was going to accept. I move to accept the January 6th, 2014 executive session minutes. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, the only actual discussion I had on that is, no. The third paragraph from the bottom, chair stated the purpose of executive session.
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't actually done, so if we can remove that paragraph, the motion itself is the one above it that Mr. Fonseca made.
Okay.
So if we could remove, are you in January the 6th?
Yep.
Yours looks different than mine.
This one, executive session.
Executive session.
Yeah.
Got it.
This one here.
Got it.
That should come out. Okay. Motion to amend, to remove the third from last paragraph.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Fonseca.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mayeau. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. And motion to approve the full minutes with the amendment.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Next up.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session meeting of January 13th, 2014.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries 5 to 0. And one more. Move to approve the January 13th, 2014 executive session minutes.
Seconded.
And it's the same thing.
Yep, okay. That is on our form, that's why.
As the executive?
In the executive, it's on our form to have the chair states that the purpose of the meeting.
Okay, but that's not what we did. I don't like the sentence.
Okay.
Right.
Do you want to move that on?
Take that off, please. We can revisit the format, maybe.
Okay.
So, motion to amend, remove the third from last paragraph.
So moved.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. And motion to approve minutes with amendment.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Carries 5 to 0. That was the longest.
Yes.
That's okay. We got through it. Thank you. Committee and subcommittee communications. Mr. Fonseca, please.
Couple items. Did you get all the motions? December Student of the Month from the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, Thomas Keat Automotive Technology 1. Also, on March 15th of this year, Division 5 will be hosting a Park presentation, probably similar to the one that will be taking place at Minnetoga on February 5th. Location's still to be determined, but it should be somewhere in this area. We're trying to get out as much information on Park through as many sources as we can.
You let us know when.
I will.
Okay.
I do know it's March, it's March 15th. I'm not sure of the location. Once I get the location, I'll let you guys know.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Mrs. Mayeau.
I do not have anything.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just the high school assets were announced by the Republican in the fall. And as always, we did very well. We had all told 18 all Western Mass, 12 academic achievers, and one all academic team. And that one all academic team was Mr. Ryan Powell. Congratulations to those 31 students. We're getting into the honors.
Very cool. Thank you. Mrs. Marcin-Boucher.
Just want to ask people to purchase your tickets for the E-Leaves auction and dinner dance. It's going to be February 8th, and they asked that everybody wear red to support the Spartan and Isangmeto students in general. And you can actually order them online. So you just go to the E-Leaves Facebook or website, and it will take you to a place where you can purchase tickets.
Red, huh?
Red.
Red. I don't own much formal wear.
Red, they're what?
I thought about my soccer coaching jacket.
The tie.
That's fine. That works.
Yeah? That's work? All right. I got permission from a board member.
They don't mind.
Cool.
They want you there. They want you supporting that side.
Okay. We're going to go to our next item, which is the High School Program of Study revisions. And Mrs. Flanagan and Mrs. Donardo are here this evening.
In your packets, you have information on the recommended revisions to the Program of Studies. As you just said, we have Mrs. Flanagan and Mrs. Donardo here to walk us through that. I do have one printed copy, if anybody wants to look at the old Program of Studies. It seemed as though people were okay on that. Diane Chiano had left me know that I didn't need to be on one copy.
It's great.
Okay. Ladies, thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having us.
Please take the floor and walk us through.
Okay. Just to give you a little bit of background, this year for the first time, we had what we call the Guidance Summit. And what this included was all the guidance team, and we invited every representative from every department to come and talk about big picture stuff of the high school. So things like how do we fix our schedule if it works now, electives and so forth. So a lot of what you see in front of you today came from a discussion that we had with a good portion of our staff. So first and foremost, the first ones are pretty easy. It's just changed to the foreign language so that it reads TBA in our Program of Studies. And then, of course, we want to add our new mission statement and learning expectations to Program of Studies. So that's the first two. The second, actually, the next two are tied together. One of the things that we are, we were talking about with our staff, and we talk about this with parents all the time, is we often hear, you know, is there any way to build more academic opportunities for kids? Our schedule, block scheduling is great for a lot of reasons, but it can sometimes be a little bit confining as well. So we started looking at ways to open up some blocks, and one of the things that came out of that was what we're outlining for you. Our proposal is to move physical education. Now, it's always, it's still going to be a 12 credit requirement for graduation, but instead of requiring students to take it 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, what we're proposing is they have to take it mandatory 9th, 10th, and 11th grade. It frees them up a little bit in their senior year so that they can take AP courses, they can take more electives, they can do dual enrollment at some of the local colleges, they can do independent studies. And so that's where we are with that. And if you notice, there's in italics, it says that for the class of 2015, students must pass three physical education courses. So the class of 2015, because we want to roll this out next year, would be exempt from that requirement. So I don't know if you have any questions about how that would work. But in order to make this happen, we would have to eliminate our junior and senior advisory periods. Because right now at the high school, the students take PE day one, day one, they're in PE, and then they take their junior or senior advisory. So we're eliminating that so that the juniors can take it all year around the PE piece.
So this would effectively start with the class of 2016, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So next year's seniors class would be the first class to actually see it. But they wouldn't have that graduation requirement that's technically in place.
Right, right.
So we're looking for a waiver for them.
Okay.
The junior exploratory and senior advisory predominantly was a sort of a guidance curriculum, if you will. How do you take some of that now and spread that out through, I guess, all four years?
Right, so in the 9th and 10th grade year, we use the PE classes to meet with some of those students. So we'll have, we'll do that for our juniors. And then seniors, we'll have to get a little creative and maybe do more small groups by counselor. But we really do seven meaningful lessons per semester with the junior kids and then our seniors. So, you know, and that downtime becomes idle time in the senior advisory and junior. So we'll certainly still deliver our guidance curriculum.
Yeah.
No, I'm just.
Just to give, I know that there's, you know, one of the questions that was asked of us is, you know, do we have enough space now for these seniors now? Because they're going to not be having this. Amanda was so gracious enough to pull up the electives, and we did all the math. We have 150 possible choices as of right now, and that does not include some of the changes that we're asking for yearbook. So, and I think there's 100 spots that we were looking to fill, so we're in good shape with, you know, making sure that every kid has something to fill up that spot. So the idea is that they're not, we're not changing the credits. They're still required to take the same amount. We're just changing the scope of how they achieve those credits.
So in junior, for instance, in junior year, instead of going half a year gym, I mean a half, like every other day.
Right, every other day.
Your every day, like you would be in 9th or 10th grade.
Right, so the hours are still the same as what.
And one of the things we felt was really important to modify the curriculum for PE. So like 9th and 10th grade's a very set curriculum. What we're now asking for is that, there's another caveat to this, if you go down to where it says grade 11 PE new courses, we are modifying our curriculum to give our juniors four choices of courses that they could potentially take. So it's team sports, individual sports, life fitness, and personal fitness. So the students will now have a choice in which direction they want during their junior year. And, you know, we're really in favor of giving the kids choices and giving them more opportunities to fill their schedule with things that they find might be meaningful to them as they start getting into college and career.
Do we have four PE teachers at once? Is that how you make that one? Because it would all.
We talked about this in terms of the scheduling.
Yeah.
So we're going to look at the numbers in terms of, okay, so if most of our kids choose the personal fitness and the life fitness, we would consolidate, well, not consolidate, we would make those two sections of each course. So, you know, team sports may be something kids are more likely to choose for the second semester with the individual sports. So in terms of making it work for teacher schedules, we would have to make it, you know, big picture master schedule. It would look like that, yeah.
Okay.
So that's the, those are all connected. The other thing that's listed is the removal of keyboarding for the Program of Studies. We're very much focused right now in talks of trying to develop our business and technology department so that it reflects 21st century learning. And really, if you look at all the research and look at other schools, that keyboarding class is now being integrated at the lower levels because, you know, just because of the pacing of technology these days. So we are in conversations with both the elementary and middle school level to see if they could work that into their curriculum so that it's not a set course at high school. For the time being, we're going to replace, not replace, but move kids from, that would typically be in that class, into a course that we really believe in called Personal Finance, which will give them real-life applications that, you know, will get them ready for life after high school. And we're also looking at new courses like project-based learning as a technology and business class that we're hoping that our teachers can develop for next year. So we're taking a look at our business and technology department and just trying to build more relevancy in contemporary topics into that particular department. The other thing that we wanted to add was adding the senior project. I know many of you, all of you, were there for that. So we want to make that as a part of the senior experience, and all our teachers are on board with that, and we really believe in that project, so that was another thing we wanted to add. We also wanted to add yearbook as a course. Right now, it is done after school, and we just feel that it is a court, another grade elective that kids can choose. We've been looking at curriculum for this course, and it's pretty exciting. There are so many different aspects that you would typically do in outside of a club. So there's going to be a journalism piece to it. Like right now, our yearbook is very picture-based, so there'll be more writing in it. We've even talked about soliciting the help of Mr. Mackey to include a digital yearbook, so we'll embed some technology into this course. And that is going to be taught by our librarian, so that's the yearbook course. And then the Latin piece that we're adding, we don't have in our current Program of Studies a Level III Latin. We have it for Spanish and we have it for French, but we don't have it for Latin, and the Latin program is definitely growing. So we thought it was important to give those students an option if they didn't feel comfortable going to the honors level, just as we do all of our foreign languages.
Technical question. Is that Latin III or Latin III honors?
Latin III.
So we offer the Latin III honors?
Currently.
Oh, so we're offering Latin III honors and Latin.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, don't ask me why. We went to Latin II, Latin III honors, but, well, you would know that. Sorry to do that. Forgot that. The next one is, we're going to remove inductive reasoning. We'd like to remove inductive reasoning and replace that with math literacy. Math literacy is a course that is, applies real-world applications of mathematics and is very much aligned to the common core, which is, you know, it also gives, now that we're requiring four years of math, it gives our students who may not be as strong in math, an option for them. And the idea is to, you know, apply much of the common core, real-world stuff into that, into that course. So that would be the fourth-year math for our students. And then, we already went over the PE additions to the grade 11 curriculum, the grade 12 curriculum. And then last but not least, removing AP Physics and replacing it with an AP Physics I, AP Physics II. And that was the recommendation of the College Board. That was something that the College Board is suggesting that high schools across America follow.
Now, is, was AP Physics a full year originally?
It's a full semester, 84, and then it goes to the split block.
Oh, okay. So now AP Physics I and Physics II, how will that be?
It's going to be the same, but he's going to teach it. So if a student signs up for AP Physics I, they would take it in an 84-minute block and then continue on with the split block. And he's going to teach the same AP Physics II in that block because it's very self-paced, and the way the curriculum's been changed, it's more.
So they would do maybe one junior year and the other senior year like that?
Right.
Could they take them simultaneously?
Simultaneously, yeah.
They can.
Yep.
The senior project, as you mentioned, Gina, was great for us, I think, to attend, and certainly a good experience and really get a taste of what some of these kids are able to do and potential for the future. So I know you're adding it as, I guess, as an English course, is it?
It would be, it would already, it would be embedded into the English curriculum. So every senior, with the exception of our AP students, would be doing this during their senior year.
So pretty much the way Ms. Abel did it this year.
Correct. But we just want to make it more structured, and we want to make it official.
And you would have the same, you're anticipating the same type of ending as we experienced next year?
Yep, we just want to make sure.
Probably closer to 200 students.
Yeah, we want to give everybody that experience. We can do it.
Okay, that's great. No, it's a fantastic expansion.
It was. It really was. I mean, I will give kudos to those kids because they were real creative.
It's getting a good buzz with the kids, too. The kids are like, oh, this is cool.
Yeah.
Because I know my guys came home and they were like, some of the students that did it were in some of their classes, or they just know, they were petrified. They did wonderful.
Yeah, they did.
You know, they really did.
Especially coming before strangers.
Yeah.
So it was a real good experience.
It's great.
You wouldn't know they were scared.
And Ms. Flanagan, the new mission statement, learning expectation, this was developed with the staff completely involved?
Oh, absolutely. We, actually, the kids came up with the new mission statement.
I like that. ELHS is nice.
It's an acronym for ELHS. And so that was a real collaborative effort. The learning expectations are fully developed from 21st century learning. You can see it's got all those pieces in there, and then the corresponding rubric. The great thing about this is that this is now becoming a living rubric. So for example, our teachers are utilizing the rubric with projects in class, and twice a semester now, the students are graded on these learning expectations. And they have something to go by because they're utilizing the rubric in their class. So that's the direction we're going with that.
And the math literacy reason, what level is there? That's a standard level, our essentials are honors?
Standard level, yeah.
With all the changes in the curriculum, staffing, you made the same draw, you work within the existing staffing?
Yep. Like I said, we've gotten a little bit creative. We have Dan, our librarian, who's now going to be teaching the yearbook, so we didn't have to pull that from another teacher's schedule. Keyboarding wasn't a big deal because Mrs. Mushenkel now will take another section of Personal Finance, which is a course we want to build up anyway. So we're in good shape with staff.
Actually, former education recommends that all high schools offer a Personal Finance course.
Yeah, man.
Because they call it financial literacy, right?
Yeah, something technical like that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I like that the kids can pick what they want to be. That might make a difference for some of them.
I think it will.
Okay, with that, then we can make a motion, please.
Move to approve the High School Program of Studies revisions for 2014, 2015, as presented tonight.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
I abstain.
And one abstention, so the vote carries 4 to 0. Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies.
All right. We are going to move to 2015 budget development. Mr. Smith.
Okay. In your packets, you have an item without the stickies that are on mine. It's basically a spreadsheet or a table. And what this is, is your first look at the identify needs for the fiscal year 2015. So these are coming from, to give you the entire process, the first part, it's coming from buildings and departments indicating what they feel the needs are going into next year to continue to move programs forward and support all students. And then, we discussed it as a leadership team, you've seen that in the budget development process, and start to narrow it down. In this, just thinking of our budget development as a whole, where we've been looking at trying to meet the 1 percent parameter, interestingly enough, as we go through any of these fiscal years, and we put together our needs, we've never forwarded a needs budget that I would say is above 4 and 1/2 percent. And this one here would only take our entire budget request to 3.8, I believe. Am I correct in that term? So a lot of work gets accomplished in trying to make sure that, one, we're maintaining a high degree of fiscal responsibility, but also making sure that we're always keeping our focus on our students. So as you look at this, you see the nice piece to all of this is we changed our forms last year, if you remember. We changed our process for budget development. And so this year, we utilized the form with a few revisions and made it into a Google form. So we've really taken off across the district on the Google platform for collaboration, both in classes with students, but also with our staff. And so the Google form then populates a spreadsheet that captures all. Everybody who puts in a request, it goes into the spreadsheet, and then we've been, through discussions, start to modify the spreadsheet. So as you look down, it gives you where it was requested from, it gives you an idea of what exactly is being requested. It also gives you an estimated cost, and in the end, we've added up a total. The one caveat I'd place in there is that we did, and you see the asterisk on the last page, we did remove the cost that's estimated there for the technology request, not because we don't think it's important, we think it's very important. And we had a lot of discussions around this with the middle school put in that request and with the leadership team as a whole. The money for something like that really should be through the IT capital request, and it is. That renewal line item is in the IT capital budget. So we didn't calculate it into the tally for our estimated cost for needs. However, we did want to leave it there, similar to what we did on our capital spreadsheet, if you remember, with, say, the upgrade to the electrical system at the high school. We know that that would be included in any type of comprehensive project for the high school, but we want to make sure capital and everybody's aware that we have maxed out that system. Same type of idea across, really, not just the middle school, but I think Mr. Allen as a new principal has really uncovered the frustration that, not only at the middle school, but probably across the district, we have aging in computers. And so as we continue to utilize them, not only in the classroom, but to get our work done with colleagues, if you're using a Google platform to collaborate, you need to be able to connect to that Google platform. And our computers across the district are aging. In some cases, we have computers that are as old as, say, 10, 11 years old. In other cases, probably our best-case scenario right now is we have computers that are 2 to 3 years old. Those will be our youngest computers. I don't think we have too many computers that are just in their first year. And Mr. Quimby from the IT department knows this, and certainly has been helping us, as all his staff has, throughout. So wanted to make sure you understood that asterisk. I can walk you through, in general, all the needs, and then you'll hear a much more detailed presentation on our next meeting as we put the entire budget presentation together. And you have the leadership team here. Basically, as you're looking and you go down on that front sheet, the first item is the high school requesting a new math teacher. And you just heard Mrs. Flanagan, Mrs. Donardo discuss the fact that, as we did last year, recognizing that we really, to meet admissions requirements, needed to make sure that our students were taking four years of math, all students were taking four years of math. That requirement has placed a high demand on our math department in terms of making sure we can meet all the different math courses. And so, that's a need that's being outlined there. Also, an additional special education teacher. We actually, right now, at the high school, have our highest caseloads. And as we move further into inclusion at the high school, that's a piece that I know Mrs. Flanagan is looking at. We'd like to make sure they were reducing the ratio of a special educator to the caseload students that that special educator serves.
What are the, what is the caseload you know?
Caseload can be anywhere from, yeah, it's about 40 students.
Per special ed teacher?
Yeah, we're in the 30s in terms of average. But it's not unheard of that we have some special educators at the high school with 40 student caseload, which is not similar across the district.
Not similar. It's lower?
Much lower, yeah, much lower. Probably our lowest is at Meadowbrook. And then, ratios creep up a little bit, grades three through five. And then, even a little bit more at the middle level. But the highest special educator to student ratio sits right now at the high school. The last request on this first page is one that you've seen before. It's moving the freshman guidance counselor from a .6, I believe, FTE to a full FTE.
Is this any particular, I see top priority from the high school. Is that top priority from the leadership team?
No, this is, that's still, as they populated the high school, put in that request, that was what the...
Just for the high school?
Right.
So, leadership team hasn't ranked these in any way?
No. And the leadership team, I don't even think, as we present, will be ranking it.
Okay.
One of the things we did discuss, last year, we reduced it, if you remember. We had a needs list that probably had anywhere from, let's say, 10 to almost 15 when we first started the process. And we reduced it to eventually three. In this case, as we looked at it, if you take out that equipment, it's not an incredible or overwhelming needs list that has been identified. It's one that shows fiscal responsibility and is reacting to what is our greatest student need at this time. As you flip the page, you have the request around technology that I've talked about. Then, the second one down, this is recognizing that, as we move to the middle level, we do have a number of very successful special education programs. We probably could even do a better job if we were able to differentiate more and create a program that deals specifically with behavioral and social emotional needs. Also, diagnosed learning disabilities. But you would have to have that piece combined in the program that's being presented here.
That could save tenfold what it costs if we could get more of those kids to stay in district than to get outplaced. Because we don't want them outplaced. And they're expensive, and they're not with their peers, and they're not in their town. And I think that that is important for everyone to realize, that if you do a better job at that level, they might even take some of the heat off of the high school at that point, too.
Right. I mean, you probably have to look at, then, how you're staffing the high school as well if you start. We do have, I wouldn't say it's clearly defined at the elementary level, but we have it better defined, if you will, at the elementary level. There are more options to support a student may be going through or displaying some of these needs. There's less as you get to the middle level and even less as you get to the high school.
Well, if there's really that kind of savings, though, couldn't we fund it and save in the outplacement?
That would be some, we'd have to look at how many. We don't place a ton of students out to these programs. We do place some. So, you know, we'd have to look at whether those students, again, that would be a team decision. So, if the team were to decide to bring those students back, then you would have those savings. If teams hesitate, then you're not gonna make those savings.
So, that becomes part of the discussion that we need to figure out before we decide if we're gonna fund it or not. Because if there is a real savings, and that's true. But if we're not willing to do it, then it doesn't make sense.
You are in a better position as a district to advocate, obviously, for your own programs. But if you're building it first year, it's gonna be...
Right. And if there's long-term...
I think you're right, Mr. Tuck. And that's what we did on autism. Rock kids back. And that's what we did in the learning center, rock kids back to our outplace. So, the model you're talking about, we've already done twice.
Right. It just takes time before you show, it shows its roots.
And parents are cautious, and the team is cautious. You understand where they're coming from.
It's the initial investment. And we're all saying the same thing. It's an initial investment that we have to be careful.
And with the social emotional behavior, there's such a spectrum.
Correct.
That it's like, how far do we want to go on that spectrum? Or can we practically handle?
Right. And there, I mean, right now, without having a designated staff member, I think our middle school does a pretty good job of bringing different pieces to the table, if you will, with each team meeting. You know, you might be bringing the adjustment counselor into the mix of one of those discussions. You might be bringing certain support block through tutorial or advisory, as you discuss. So, there's a lot of creative and very good thinking that goes on in the team meetings, but there's no designated one program.
Courtney, talking, if we're all set with that one, I just wanted to go back to the prior one and how we talked about IT budgeting and such. And first and specific request is for laptops for each of the teachers. So, we would look to, that would be something we would try to work with IT.
As we go to renewal, yes, exactly. That's an excellent question. And you'll have, probably in the next two meetings, a technology presentation of where the leadership team would like to go with your support in terms of the next four or five years of technology. Mr. Quimby, I believe, will be presenting with us. So, he's involved in all those discussions. The idea here is that the laptop allows for, obviously, much more mobility and collaboration and works with some of the equipment we already have, such as the MIBOs and so forth.
We saw that with the senior projects, you know, the cumbersomeness of desktops versus laptops. So, certainly makes sense.
The other thing, the operating systems on some of these older computers, like if they're like Windows ME or whatever. I was told by my resident guru that the ME servers are gonna go down at some point for the next couple of years, assuming Ryan's on top of this. Because then, all those computers are useless unless we upgrade, you know?
Yeah, he is on top of that. How much longer he and his team can throw a patch and put Band-Aids on it? That's, I know he's presenting that to capital.
Because when the servers go down, there's nothing you can do about it except for upgrade the system you have.
And basically, in all, all IT departments do this. What we tried to do, we did, if you remember, two years ago now, as we went to the MIBO, specifically at the elementary schools so we could allow them to be more flexible, we replaced every desktop possible with a laptop. And they used those computers then for parts to keep our other computers around the district running. And so, you know, they are as resourceful as any IT department that I've ever seen. So, I can't say enough about their expertise and their ability to adapt and overcome. However, we're all hoping that their capital budget gets approved. And then, that renewal comes in and we start moving some of these computers out and renewing them.
Is this within the IT capital request, this part of the renewal?
Yes.
Oh, it is? For this year? And is that the number, 72,000?
No, it's actually higher.
Just for Brooklyn?
No, this is just, yeah. This number is just for Brooklyn. What's in his renewal, or the IT's capital budget, I believe, is closer to 350, 380,000.
Oh, just for schools?
No, that 380,000 would be town as well. However, it would be a high percentage for schools, somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think, 250,000.
Is that our only school-related capital request through IT?
That and the phone system renewal.
Which is a town-wide thing as well?
I think so.
That's it? Okay.
It would be nice.
He may upgrade cameras, but it may be in that 380,000 number.
I think the 380 encompasses a lot of things townwide and maybe even like hubs and servers and some of those things, too.
Can we have a list or some description in terms of what the IT requests schools having? That, so, I guess my question is, who is requesting? I know IT's requesting, but who's approving that request?
That's what the technology committee has been working with Ryan on, is, you know, how do we make sure we move? If we're gonna put a four- or five-year plan together, how do we continue to move this forward and make sure we have the machines? So, that's what we've been working on.
And who's on that committee? Who's that committee?
That is me, Terry, Mrs. Flanagan, Mr. Fredette. And last year, we actually had representatives from each building across the district. This year, we haven't gotten to that level yet because the first thing that we wanted to make sure we were doing is, before bringing in a group of individuals, we wanted to outline a plan that makes sense so that we can get, bring them in and get their feedback on it. So, that's what's gonna be presented to the school committee in the next two meetings.
Okay. Good. Great.
One more, just one more point I'd like to make is, it'd be nice if we could get some sort of a schedule for replacement. Like, you know, years ago, we did have something where computers were, we had a cycle going. It would be nice to get to town. And I understand how tight things are, but to commit, because technology is just gonna be changing every year, as we all know. We're behind as it is now. In order to catch up, we need some sort of a schedule that would be adhered to year in and year out under a capital request. And I think that's something we need to continue to discuss with the appropriate committees.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the final request on that second sheet. This is taking a retirement position, which is an interventionist position, and making it a full FTE and having it concentrate more around reading intervention. And most likely, if we were to get this position, the posting would be around someone who has experience as a reading specialist. And then, doing more with the interventions that we already have up and running and maybe expanding the interventions at Meadowbrook.
And we should say how wonderful Meadowbrook has done over the past year, increasing all levels with their assessments at a phenomenal level, which we should have mentioned earlier, but didn't.
Seth, is that, that's the current salary for the .5 staff?
I believe that's all the way over to the right.
So, that in addition to the 30,000?
Correct.
Because someone more experienced.
Because our budget had .5.
So, that .5 is budgeted for 39,000 dollars?
In level services.
Because it's a specialty?
Right now, we have...
It's high for a .5, I guess, is my point.
Well, that's based on the individual who's in that position.
And I imagine anybody who would take that position would be more experienced.
Most likely. If you're gonna move it to a full reading interventionist where you're looking for someone who's a reading specialist, you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna have high degrees. Most likely, if you can, you'd like to get someone with experience.
That makes sense, yeah. Terry?
Yeah, I'm thinking the dollar amount in the center, you know, in the block with just dollars is really the amount. That 39,978, I think, was an original part of the request that was higher than it might have been. I think I knocked it down to the 30,578.
The additional request would be the...
Yeah.
Oh, the additional is 30.
Yeah. Sorry, I missed that. I didn't edit that out.
Okay, got it. And to Mr. Pachero's point, how are we gonna prioritize it? Is the leadership team gonna tackle it first, or how, or how do we?
Well, we were gonna present...
If we ever get to the point that we have to...
We were gonna present all of this. And then, you still have another meeting where you can discuss it. The full presentation will be the next school committee meeting. You have the leadership team here. We did not prioritize it simply because, as you flipped that last page, we feel that that's a pretty fiscally responsible number when looking at a needs budget. And these are all needs that will impact students at all levels.
And level services was two...
Level services was 2.6.
2.6. And this brings it to what?
3.8.
3.8. So, additional 1.2%. 325,000 is 1.2%?
Oh, what percent is two?
No, you would add, you would add that to the level services. That takes you to 3.8.
Right.
Right. So, it should be 1.2% of 325.
No, 325 plus the...
Plus the 2.6.
2.6 is 1.2%.
I got you. I'm sorry.
So, the 325 is 1.2% of our budget.
Well, 1% is 271,000.
Yeah, 50 is, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, cool. You got two left here?
Yes. On the final page, you have, looking at the grades three through five specifically, we've concentrated in the last few years very heavily on revamping our literacy block and making sure we're embedding professional development for our teachers around that literacy block. And that's where our academic coaches have really concentrated. We have not added, on the other side, to the math. And that's something, actually, as we came out of the fall, looking at some of our state data and even our STAR data, math is an area of challenge, continues to be an area of challenge. And so, the only request that's on the sheet here, and that was after much discussion, for the grades three through five schools, would be this shared math coach.
The description is very confusing, Mr. Smith. If you read it out loud, it says, "The MCAS CPI mathematics scores of all schools fall well below the CPI for ELA." And 87,300 math and...
If you look at our CPI for ELA, we've always been much higher in composite performance index.
Oh, I see. They compare the math scores to ELA scores.
Right. Our ELA scores continue to be strong and improve. Our math scores have been lagging behind and are flatlining in some cases.
I understand. It seems confused to me for us.
And the full group, we'll give you a better in-depth presentation at our next meeting. But I wanted you to have a chance to look at, not only how we're capturing this and using technology, which was a nice breakthrough for us, but just so you can start to think about it as you are and ask questions. And then, maybe you have more questions as the leadership team is here.
To that regard, the funding possibilities for that one, anyone, should we have them explain? I just, if we, I'm not sure what the funding source is here.
Yeah, funding source, most likely, would be through the budget. I don't think you can... Especially if you share, if you share that individual between the two schools, Title I. I mean, we will be having a Title I review, which is upcoming. And my guess is, given that we know, as you start that process, your self-study, so to speak, is around looking at what's your comparability when you've got schools with the same grade spans. But what they're looking at is what's your comparability prior to using any Title I funding? So, are you equal, basically, students-to-staff ratio? And they define what staff you can look at prior to using Title I funding. So, I don't think Title I would be a recommended way to approach that.
And then, the second paragraph, is that, is that to meet the 1%? That's, doesn't necessarily need to be there, that paragraph?
Right. It doesn't need to be there now. However, those are some of the challenging conversations that we've been having. One of the items, if you remember last year, that was changed in our process, was we asked, okay, let's say you can't get this through a new request in the operational budget. Are there other ways to look at it? And that question became all that more important this year as we were looking at, how do you meet the budget parameter of a 1% increase?
Just pause there now. There are three items here that affect special ed. This one right here, we're just talking about now, correct? The social...
You're talking about the...
Emotional behavior, special education teacher, virtual pack. And inclusion model at the high schools. Where's Dr. Welch on all these three items?
I think she would be supportive in all three items. She would better be able to, she might prioritize them.
I don't know how supportive she'd be of cutting the school council.
No, yeah. I don't think anybody's supportive of that. It's just part of the, we wanted to make sure that you understood the conversations we've been having.
That's, that's to meet the 1%. This is the need. So, this is, we're looking at the other end of the swing. And that kind of just...
Yeah, no. No one would say that that's our best way to get the funding. However, that was in the discussion because that was part of the challenge of how do we meet the town's budget parameter?
I'm just asking because I would think that Joan Welch played a part in the inclusion model and that transition through the classroom, if we were to go that direction.
Right. Absolutely. And to give you more information on, you know, right now, how the district is outplacing those type of specific situations, I'll ask Dr. Wells just to look at that and bring some of that as we present the entire budget.
One more?
Yep. And then, the last one, this is something that grew out of, if you remember, last year, we had an outside group help us facilitate through a number of different disagreements, if you will, with our bus driver unit. And part of the report, not in other words, not only interviews and recommendations and legal recommendations in that situation, there also was a final report that made recommendations as to how we can continue to improve the situation. One of those was to provide more support for the transportation manager, who currently has a day, basically, from, I would say, 5:45 or 5:30, depending on when she reaches the bus yard. And it goes beyond two. But what I've been trying to do is get her so that she's not wearing thin at both ends and here until 4:30, 5 o'clock every day. However, one of the things that she often will do at two is go back over... However, one of the things that she often will do at two is go back over, or before two, go back over to the bus yard to check in on drivers. But you can't be both places, you know, here directing certain things, because most of the communication flows through this office specifically for dismissal and afternoon runs. It might be after your normal school-to-home runs, then you may have athletic runs and that kind of thing. Or you may have them simultaneously. So that's where that request came from. Figured as we're looking at the needs across the district, we should recognize what an outside group is telling us we should be looking at.
Terry's shaking her head, too.
Definitely.
It does seem like Doc Transportation Manager puts in an ultimate amount of hours.
Well, we have buses running from 6:00 AM to 4:30 every single day. And then later for athletic events on weekends, a good chunk of the summer, there's summer programs all summer long where we have buses running. I mean, it's a lot. It's a huge program.
She's on call most of the time, too, right?
Oh, yeah, don't she leave, see if we can get her out of here at two? Her phone's on.
Exactly.
So that, basically, we, Terry and I, will operate and work the bus phone out here. Also, Ms. Tiago will take the calls from her desk if it's specifically, it's a school calling or parent calling. That would be the first one to respond, use the phone. But you're right, she's on call, I mean, I'm planning on talking to her tomorrow around 4:00 AM.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So she's on call pretty much at any time. So it's, yeah, it is.
No, it is.
And I know she does a lot. She's gone out to drive the buses some of the time.
Oh, yeah, she's. I've seen her with her bus then.
Yeah, the past, some of the weather we've been having lately, she said she's driven the routes to see, like, why the bus may have been delayed or where it might have been icy, that it would be a problem. And I know she spoke to me, usually she finds the beginning of the year, too, to be really overwhelming when you have all the paperwork coming in.
Yes.
People registering last minute or needing other work done. So, and if you just walk into her office, you can just see the stacks of papers and folders.
I mean, she's, our current transportation manager, Mrs. Gamble, has an incredible amount of experience that really serves the district well. She trains all of our substitutes. That's an incredible amount of time there. And so we like to be in a situation where we have available substitutes, but that's something that does not often happen. We do have two that are guaranteed a certain amount of hours, so they stay with us. But often we train someone and they're the go-to daily sub after our first two, and then that person gets a job.
Right.
Which is the name of the game, or it does put a dent in your strategic planning, so to speak.
Just on that one, the funding sources, I'm just hesitant on several of those that are listed, specifically fees. We talked fees, but that's for another. Okay. Great, we have more information on that?
Yes.
I think our challenge is going to be to see if the summer, we can fold this into our forward course to appropriations for any one of the time comes. I really feel like to keep, to have a 1 percent level services in a needs budget, I think we should all consider how we fold it into one budget at some point. Just say we speculate, that's all. That's one thing I'm going to think about.
And I agree. And I think once we have the presentation of this fully and, you know, we can come to some sort of big picture together, then I think we just present it as it is, and this is the budget that we're looking to request.
Yeah, exactly. One of the, obviously, items that would enter into, say, a leadership team discussion is where did the original building place the priority? Just on the first page, you see top priority, top priority, and then second priority. So that would delineate somewhat in terms of if you were creating a list of, okay, which needs, it should be at the top, which needs might fall back a little bit. Although I think, as we discussed, not I think, no, as we discussed it, one of the things we're consistently trying to do is maintain a certain high level of fiscal responsibility. So you're not seeing 20 needs.
Right.
You're seeing needs that continue to move our students forward along our mission, but also are recognizing that there are town budget parameters and we are part of the town as a whole.
The one thing is, you know, by the time we meet with appropriations, we will know what the governor's number is, as well as we may have the senate number by the time we meet with appropriations, or the house number, I'm sorry. The house number comes out second. So we'll have some more financial information. And I agree with the discussion that we fold this all into one presentation. But we should have, hopefully, good numbers coming out of Boston to base our budget on. I feel that probably by the end of next week, we'll see what the governor's numbers are.
Tomorrow.
Is it tomorrow?
His state.
Well, he delayed, he delayed the state.
But they did not move away the budget.
Glad you went to 70.
They said they were still going to release, at least that's what it said on the news tonight.
Yeah, because I had heard it was going to get put off until next week.
Yeah, I figured with this day, this date delayed, he might.
Yeah.
But that's good news for us.
That is good news.
Yeah. Okay. Up next, we have, we're going to revisit our capital request, as you all know, in being at the last Capitol, Capitol meeting, Capitol meeting that we had with Capitol, Capitol Planning Committee, I couldn't think of what we're planning. We talked about our first request and how it may be a debt exclusion issue in terms of how it would be funded, and that being the classroom additions to Meadowbrook. So we thought we'd put it back on the agenda tonight to see how this committee felt, if we wanted to continue with that as a capital request, and knowing how it would have to be funded, or if we wanted to postpone that request until a future year where we may have some other capital requests, large capital requests, and it could be kind of consolidated all at one time. So that's why we're on tonight with that.
No, I think you pretty much hit the exact message to start the discussion. So that's where the parenthetical comment comes in. If that's something that the committee wanted to vote to move off the list, then obviously the other items bump up, and it's also another chance to look at, after having that discussion with capital, is this still the order that you would like to present as your prioritized list to capital? Just to give you quick figures, if you remove that, originally we had 2.7 million in terms of capital projects, this knocks us down to about 919,000, 920,000, actually, it's 918,000 after that. So it does, in terms of requests for fiscal year 2015, it does knock it down pretty considerably.
Well, I think at this point, it makes, it kind of makes sense to remove it because we know that, you know, based on the discussion we had with capital planning, that, you know, they kind of said the best way to go is through debt exclusion, that, you know, it is quite a large amount to consider for any one capital plan. So, I mean, you know, do we try and tie it in with other projects, you know, a year down the road?
Well, therein lies the other issue, because, and if we're going to talk about the future, and we talk about the possibility of a feasibility study in a year, and then another larger investment for whatever project we decide on as a town for this building, is the thought of this committee to combine it next year, which would basically put our feasibility study with this project, basically doubling the cost of the feasibility study? Or do we wait again and bypass that and only put the feasibility on for debt exclusion? And thus put this on for, if we were to do a major project, you know, it's a much smaller percentage increase if we look at another debt exclusion down the road for the federal funding.
Well, the question is, can we keep the, you know, can we keep those trailers? Because those were the trailers that were really in bad shape. If we, let's say, delay it by three, two or three years, can we keep those to a point where they're not a danger to anybody?
Right.
Can DPW and Bruce continue to work the miracles that they've worked to keep them safe and habitable?
Right.
That's, you know, that's a $100,000 question.
My thought, one of five of us, is I would caution against adding it on the same year as the feasibility, because I think that's, it changes the, I think that the feasibility study is a real barometer of how the town is feeling about a big project.
I agree.
And so if we want a true barometer, we should leave that as what it is in the feasibility study alone. If we double the cost by adding this to the feasibility study, it then changes and perhaps
Well, that's why I said.
Decreases the possibility, right?
Two or three, two or three years down the road. Once the feasibility study is done, we're in the pipeline, we're moving forward with whatever project we decide on.
Right.
Then we put this out. I just, my only, and I'm just throwing it out there, because it was brought to our attention that these trailers are in the shape that they're in, can we keep them going? And that, through whatever capital, small cap, smaller capital projects, just to keep them habitable until we decide on how we're going to go with replacements.
And then wasn't also a thought was maybe in two or three years from now, we may not need those two, what is it, two classrooms that you had there?
At Meadowbrook, it's actually.
Four.
Well, and I think the discussion for that was Mountain View's, potentially, we could look at those two classrooms. I think the four classrooms, we're anticipating that we'll need them.
Yeah, most likely.
The two is why we put the Mountain View off and took that off, because we said, well, we could wait a few years and see potentially, maybe we could lose two classrooms somehow.
I would rather see it done properly in a couple of years than it be, I think people are going to feel like we're trying to shove these in with a feasibility study and we're asking, I agree in that, I feel somehow that we're asking for too much and that we should maybe keep things, at least for the time being, separate, but then work on having these be permanent structures.
Right.
Right.
As opposed to getting another.
Well, yeah.
Right, a trailer that you want to, right.
They're trailers.
Keep them, keep them in the conversation. Definitely keep them in the conversation.
Right, and students do go into these rooms, but they're not, it's not their regular daily classroom.
Right.
You know, they may go in once a day for a period of time, but they're not, so they need to be fixed. But certainly if DPW can keep them up and running.
For two or three more.
Yeah.
I think that makes the most sense.
It's a challenge.
It's a challenge, I know.
But I think everything's a challenge.
All right, so let's have some sort of motion to that effect, if you don't mind.
I make a motion that we remove item number one, the margin classroom Meadowbrook, and renumber the remaining 10 items as they stand.
Excellent. Motion made.
I'll second.
Second, and any other discussion? We're comfortable with the rest of the list, Gordon, you mentioned the order, is there something?
No, I just, I figured as you have the list in front of you, if there was something that struck someone in the conversation we had, capital, that this was another opportunity. If you're making a motion to modify the list, you could look at it again. There was nothing pressing, I think the order is pretty good.
I guess I have one question, and it's really, it's really very, it's almost too fine, but is Michael Fedek comfortable with five ahead of six?
I think the need for storage is at a premium, and basically what they've been doing is moving, you know, a little bit at a time if they're not going to get all of the furniture at once. So they've done little things, and they've been creative about it. Mr. Martin Boucher has seen some of the creativity in the classrooms.
I like the old library room tables that they put whiteboard on so the kids can sit there and, that's pretty inventive, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I think the storage is an issue, because if you can move some of the items that they have in the school out to storage and it can be protected, then they could utilize that space better in the school.
Okay.
The answer's yes.
And Mr. Finney was going to work on potentially looking at doing that in-house, correct? The shed? Didn't we have that?
He was, yeah. And last week, we had it again, and he was going to try to put some numbers together if he were to do it in-house.
Okay, so that number could potentially change.
Right.
And the whole idea that they had mentioned about the pod-type structures, is that kind of gone now?
It's not, it's not gone. Mr. Finney was going to look into what a cost may be. The feeling was that if we could do it in-house, it would be well-done and, you know, not something where it would be at the mercy of a storage container.
Right, right, that's, okay, that's good.
Okay.
They've done nice work, we've seen it.
They have.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to amend the capital projects list. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. We are meeting with them again or not?
We, I think we will be invited to meet with them again. We have the bus information, which I need to send to them, but I also wanted to send to them any quotation that Mr. Finney can give me with the shed, and I think that was all the follow-ups that they had requested. So it's the shed and the bus information.
Hopefully the next time.
We need to have that cost before I can send them the information.
Hopefully the next time we meet with them, they'll have some sort of a parameter on their budget, which would give us something to go on.
Right. Okay, great. Let's see, robotics field trip requests.
Okay, in your packets, you have a letter from Mr. Van Buren, who is our advisor to the science team, which is our robotics team. It gives you a minimum and a maximum in terms of estimates of students who could go to the VEX Robotics World Championship. And the reason that he has to place it in that type of format is due to the fact that they're still competing and qualifying. They may be doing that right up until the first or second of March. And once he knows who has qualified, and I think we could have up to six teams that possibly have the ability to qualify, then he'll be able to set the actual number. The maximum, however, would be having all of those people qualify and then be interested in going. So he's outlined the cost for all of it, as well as where it takes place and the dates for the trip. You had most of that actually earlier in the year. The costs now have been updated and the student amounts have been updated.
Where's the student amount? Or is there a cost per student?
I don't know if he breaks it down by student.
I don't see where he did.
I think it's overall.
Yeah.
The only thing I see is each team has a registration fee of 750, but I don't see anything.
Well, so are we to assume that if there's nine students is the best estimate, and the best estimate is 3,500, then it's, because that's 35 divided by nine? Does that make sense? 400, almost 400.
Yeah, I would think, I can double-check with him on that.
Well, if you look at.
Minus the 5,000, though, right?
Right. They get 5,000 in fund.
So if it's five after, it's 3,000 after the five, then it's 300 and change for each. Okay, just wondering, that's, yeah, that's fine, it's.
But this is how it works, right? They go through this every year, they don't know until.
Right, right. Yeah, the challenge with a competitive team is just that, that you're not going to know who is in until they've finished off those final preliminary competitions.
So we're looking for approval of the attendance at the World Championship on April 23rd and 26th.
Right, with the understanding that Mr. Van Buren will be updating us within a less-than-90-day window. That was the reason why.
Within less than 90 days, I see, okay.
Is that they will be traveling. So you're proving basically that the trip will go, we would have final numbers in less-than-90-day window.
All right, do we have a motion in that regard?
All right, I will make a motion to accept the robotics field trip for the Robotics World Championship from April 23rd to 24th, 2014, knowing that we will be updated as it gets closer.
And it's the 26th, is that?
23rd to 26th.
23rd to 26th. Yeah, that's what she said.
Yeah, 23rd through 26th.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. And Costa Rica.
Okay. Earlier in the year, you had given preliminary approval to the Costa Rica trip, which is being led by Ms. Rainier and Mr. Eckstein. Ms. Rainier is our science department chair, Mr. Eckstein is one of our science teachers. Now you have a final list of students who are going on the trip and a breakdown of their itinerary and. who are going on the trip, and a breakdown of their itinerary, and their departure date and their return date, as well as the cost.
That's a first student cost?
Yes. Except for the students who signed up early, slightly discounted rate.
And how come they don't have final flight registration or information, sorry?
They were, they have not finalized that piece, but they're working on that this week.
They really should wait for us to...
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we need a vote to that regard.
I'd move that we approve the Costa Rica trip from April 18th to 26th, 2014.
Motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries five, zero on that. We've done the high school program of studies, and finally, we have this standard agreement that we do every year with the recreation department, it's just transfer of funds to cover costs that the school department incurs, and it's the same amount, right, as last year?
Yes.
Twenty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah, 24,000.
Who's signature is that, the shed?
I think it's Mr. Federici's.
No, he's at the bottom.
Oh.
Yeah, that is Paul.
No, oh, he's talking about...
Oh, the recreation, Tom K.
Tom K.
Oh, Tom K.
Wow. Man, come on.
Do we have a motion to accept the agreement between the Eastland Public Schools and the Eastland Lateral Recreation Department for 2013, 2014? So, motion made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion?
Just want to make sure that before next year, Terry, that you checked that 24,000 dollars, are you doing okay with it, okay?
Okay.
All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And motion carries five to zero on that. And with that, we're good to go. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Marjorie Boucher. All is in favor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, you're meeting.